Are those wind turbines hooked up and generating electricity that is actually going somewhere?
Absolutely, yeah, so we have a it's called a generator interconnection agreement and that's with WAPA. It's our transmission number and the regional transmission authority has a Southwest power pool. So the wind farm is up and generating electricity and putting power on it, so.
Okay, but someone told me the other day, they said, no, it is not connected. They're all just running and it's not connected to anything because the substation isn't built yet. I said, why would they have them running if they're not generating electricity and sending us somewhere? So I'm glad they have clerks.
So what's safe here, they can on the wind farm is we've got a temporary tap. And you can't see it because it sits down on Horstley's property. And it connects us from the wind farm onto WAPA's transmission line. And it's a temporary tap and we're going to utilize that temporary tap to deliver the power. I know this is going to shock you that the government's running behind schedule. They're budgeting on the permanent interconnection facilities. They're saying that from the interconnection facility isn't going to be ready until the summer of two thousand twenty-five. We just went through there earlier, the one like three DAs out there, they're doing groundwork trying to get that thing started before winter sets in. They're still in the airport. That we'll run off that temporary tap on the Horstley's place until the summer of two thousand twenty-five. Then we'll switch over to the permanent interconnection facility. And that part, we're going to take the temporary tap to the wind farm that I was in Iowa. But we give away road construction on it and get down fired up, so.
I said, I'm not exactly sure, but I think I recall a discussion with you that you were going to use the overhead transmission lines down south until the, you know, substation was all up and operational and the city also. Oh, well, they're not mistaken, I mean, that facility sitting on part of the property on Horstley's place, you can't see from public road.
But I'm going to go up and operational, so. Yeah, so just here, you know, get the certificate of completion approved by you all. And then this ultimately goes to the PUC, it'll get filed into the docket as well and.
Do you need to take that with you today? Is it okay if we wait till Jeff gets here and get his approval? Do you need to take that signed document back with you today?
Yeah, we might get it done today.
You know when Jeff's coming up?
No, not for sure. And something.
But I spoke to Jeff, Jeff said that he was satisfied.
He is?
Yeah.
I don't have.
I don't know.
Okay, I've got a copy here for y'all, so.
I guess that's fine, I'll talk to Jeff, Jeff said he's okay.
Yeah, I don't you mind my concern, I guess.
We can call him on the phone and check some shares.
That's okay.
That would be my concern as well, is Jeff is happy with everything, if he wants.
Do you want to approve that and so move?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, we appreciate it, so. It's been a long time coming, so it's exciting to get this one down, so. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Michael, could you add my name for hand counting in the immediate future?
So.
Has it been recorded?
Uh, not yet. Um, yes, we have additional plans, but it hasn't become public information. As soon as we get it recorded, we'll let you know, but. Um, I mean, just being transparent with you all is we are in a bit of a potential solar project, actually. And we have leased both Hofer's and some Annenberg property. So just to the east side of three seventy-second, just east of where our permanent interconnection facility will be built. So we are looking at a potential solar project, just like the wind, you have to do your due diligence. So we're looking at, you know, getting a solar monitoring station out there, seeing the resource, seeing the snow impacts. Um, as you saw from an interconnection standpoint with SVP, these projects take forever. I mean, this is a project that you'll see coming down the pipe in the next couple of years. It'll probably be in, you know, kind of a four or five year timeframe. That may even be a little ambitious, so.
It's been passing ordinances.
So, um, that's a great piece of property that Hofer has, I mean, it's got no trees. It's exactly what you have to film a solar project right across this reef and permanent interconnection facilities. No one lives down there. Um, I mean, it's, it's a great location, so they'll be forthcoming on solar projects, so. But we filed that interconnection request with SVP and with WAPA as well, so that's a part of information. We just haven't gotten the solar lease reported here in the county yet, so.
Is this part of South Dakota generally sort of saturated as it's ever going to be with wind?
Not necessarily with wind, but just your transmission infrastructure. You're so limited on where you can actually get your power to. I mean, WAPA's high line is a great place. And when you jump on that line, there's just not a bunch of additional capacity on it. So it's going to take lots studying to see if even solar will work here. But you gotta start somewhere and drive to your due diligence. So great group of landowners between Hofer and Annenberg and, you know, we'll see if we got the solar resource and interconnection, if everything lines up to make a go of it, so.
Did you have your winter snow study stuff out last winter?
We did not, we did not, so. And that's, well, it's kind of fascinating because the new solar panels, they're called biational. So you have your solar on the bottom side and on the top side. So we ended up with snow covered on the ground and you end up with the light reflecting off that snow. Reflecting actually onto the bottom side of the solar panel, which also has solar panels on it, which helps your generation, so. There we go, Jeff, we always have something cooking here, so.
Congratulations on completing this.
I'll find that, just get it confirmed first.
Yeah, I say that's the good and the bad of this project is, I mean, the good is we get knocked out. And the bad is it's a big construction project when it gets rolling. And one other thing I'll just address really fast is I know we're having some concerns raised about on that public works bridge off three seventy-second, you're heading south on three seventy-second when you make, you know, the left turn into the Horstley's place. There were some concerns on that bridge. You know, we shared the same concerns. I mentioned with the commission before we even got going, all it takes is one person making a bad decision on one day to kind of screw things up the project. And after the junker place, we moved from that bridge, we get out a gravel truck driving over that bridge. It got a couple of folks fired up. Um, we did bring in an independent engineer to check the integrity of that bridge. We had a separate report conducted as well, so, and the bridge checked out. But, you know, with all that being said is, you know, WAPA is running, you know, three DAs down there right now. So someone driving across that weird bazaar is not us, so don't call screaming at us. Call WAPA and scream at them because ours are their people, so, yeah.
There's Jeff, bro, agree with compliance.
Let's go through, yeah.
Through the original.
Oh, I'll take the original. I really appreciate it, so.
Thank you, bud.
All right, see if they give you that. Sorry, I didn't make it sign. That's why I'm signing.
Good afternoon, I have three things to address here. Uh, the first thing is a quick deed for the, where the Harrison Township School used to be. And it was used for a township hall. Um, there was a reversion deed and then an affirmation of possession, which I don't get in my database. For me to actually transfer property, I need to have some form of a deed that goes with the PT fifty-five, my register of deeds. So I requested that from Elton to do that. Just to kind of clean up title and all that good stuff. So I just need to have Luke sign that and we'll be good with that.
Do I need an motion to sign it?
That would be so moved. Second.
Thanks.
All in favor?
All right, and then, um, I have the request annually for district who hosts our G I F site. They request from all counties in South Dakota the data so that they can use it for South Dakota eight-one-one. And I just need your guys' approval to go ahead and give them the data.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, and then for my two thousand twenty-four budget, I did have online item to purchase a new copier. Um, my, the copier that I have is a hand-me-down from Doug's office and it is possessed. And I would really like to get your guys' approval to pick one of the proposals to purchase a new one. I just, like I said, it is in my budget that it was approved for two thousand twenty-four.
Do you have a preference?
I would like to.
Which two proposals and why?
Um, A and B business, um, currently the copier that we have is through A and B with Lynn triple. And it's obviously less if you looked at both proposals and it's a newer model. So I would just prefer to just stay with Lynn if you guys are okay with that. I just thought, you know, I did my due diligence in getting a couple of different proposals to not be biased.
The move we approve it.
The A and B business?
Yeah.
A second.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're just gonna lease it, is that what you're doing, or are you buying it?
Purchasing it. Purchasing it.
And then there's a.
A monthly maintenance fee was already.
Maintenance fee included in that proposal.
Yes. Which I already have a maintenance fee on the current one that we have. Any other questions?
And all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
You said we had a motion to hand it over.
You're looking concerned.
I see you got the third existing one circled.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That move, we circled the old one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Hey, we're here representing Dave Johnson, even though more taller than he is. I'm here to replace his laptop. Um, he uses it for that Vex spec program that he was asked to date my stuff. He does not have enough money in his budget, so what I suggested is that he would do a contingency transfer along with other budget transfers to cover it with.
Well, if he doesn't cover any of those costs.
We get reimbursed for his wages, that's it.
But nothing for office lies or.
No, but we do have that agreement with Hyde County and some of that operational covers that.
I was just gonna ask if they would cover, if they would cover a substantial amount or.
They just sent us a check, they just trust us to take care of it.
What's the amount of surplus in his budget roughly?
That we would need transferred, about four hundred bucks tops.
Need motion?
Please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I guess I had some comments on this, so. Um, have you guys had a chance to look at the proposal for changing our sick leave and vacation to PTO at all? And any questions?
The, um, there will be no more sick leave, it's.
It'll be called extended leave, Jim, yeah.
That's only going to be used after you've used.
After you've exhausted your pay time off, yes. And you're gone for an extended pre-approved or not pre-approved. Something happens, something catastrophic happens to you or a family member. Um, they can use that extended leave instead of depleting.
Um, right now, our PTO is two weeks, correct, after you've been here so long?
It's a week the first year, two weeks.
It's a week, the first year, yeah.
And I think it's seven, it goes, seven or ten, it goes to three weeks.
Right.
And then I think fifteen years is how it's for.
And how much sick leave is each employee?
Seventy-two hours annually, right, seventy-two hours.
She just, she's got the.
The first year vacation is forty hours. Um, yours two to seven are eighty-four hours. Eight to fourteen years is a hundred and twenty hours. And fifteen up is a hundred and sixty-eight, that stays at that.
And that is sick days?
That's vacation, but sick leave, sick leave we get six hours a month, so seventy-two hours a year.
But sick leave is going out the window, right?
Right, it's just gonna be paid time off. Um, the reason, I mean, in a management position, I mean, I don't have an issue in my office. I, we, all of us up here in, that have just a clerk, it's pretty straightforward. We don't have a lot of people underneath us to manage. Um, but it's paid time off. You don't need to tell me why you're going to be gone from work. I don't, you know, it's not really my, my business, it's your paid time off. If you schedule it with me, you can be gone. Just makes it more, I don't know what the word is.
Streamlined.
Streamlined and, um, you know, sometimes there's not people that are sick, you know, and so it's just kind of more of a little bit of a.
Do we have a separate policy that continues to exist alongside what's proposed here for funeral attendants?
Yes, we do, we have bereavement.
Why do we do that? Why do we have that separately?
Um.
We just treat it differently.
Yeah, that's just a.
Most places do.
Most places do.
Because if you're out of everything, you can still go to your mom's funeral.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I know we've run into trouble on that before because somebody who's near and dear to somebody, croak. And they want to go to funeral and they can't because they're not an immediate family member or something like that.
I mean, I feel like that's, yeah, I feel like that's a different head, different head person.
Right, we've never had a battalion.
Huh?
We've never had a battalion.
Well, we never did, I think they're individual.
No.
Boss told you that, it's not the cards.
They might have been told that they didn't take annual leave for it because it wasn't within the right step of concept to do it.
Right, well, and there's always extenuating circumstances in my eyes, you know, there may be somebody, there's there may be somebody that's closer to you that's like a brother or a sister than your actual brother or sister. And if it's known, I don't, it was just.
Because you know, you know, you know your employees.
Then we're still PTO.
Looking at this, that the department heads have a very large discretion on that to do what they want to do. And I don't think, I, as we, me personally, I want to get involved in that. That's between you and your employees, and I.
I don't think that there's.
So this, what you're proposing isn't really, it's not going to cost the county money. It's just a different form of.
How we're saying what it is, yes.
We are gaining a few.
They are gaining, gaining a few extra days and, but, and we're, we made more of a tier for longevity and people that are, that stay here longer, you know? Maybe we won't have as much turnover in different offices and that gives them.
Is that eighty-four hours instead of eighty, is that what the minor difference is this?
Um.
After two years.
I'm sorry, I may have forgot to mention here. It's like it rests, rests out to about three days. Between three and three and a half days more for each tier.
For the tiers?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
For each tier, so like once you get to twenty and up? I mean, how, twenty and up, I think it's fifty and up now, how does thirty-six days?
Well, if you add sixty-two or seventy-two hours, which is what is it, seven and a half days, seven and a half days? Yeah, um.
I was thinking, totally, they get about four, they get about twenty hours.
Oh, yeah, right.
So four tiers.
Is that all?
And so with your proposal, you will have PTO, bereavement.
The bereavement is separate from this, it's in the.
But as far as days off, I mean, what, what do we, what is days off? We have PTO, bereavement.
Right now, we have sick leave and vacation and bereavement.
No, I'm talking about this proposal.
It'll just be paid time off and the bereavement, that's it.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, and this paid time off can be a condition, so, you know, three days for you for bereavement may not be enough. You know, you may want to tap into your PTO, you know, for that, but that's, that's again a whole other different thing, I guess.
And extended leave.
And extended leave, you can use your extended leave for that. And that extended leave is kind of a short-term disability kind of thing. You know, if you're gone for, let's say you break your leg and you can't come to work for three weeks because your leg's broken or you have a baby or that kind of stuff, that's what that extended leave is for.
So what this is giving everybody the freedom to do is if you want to use your personal time off or your paid time off for sick or vacation, you can do it in the same account. We're also forcing an extended leave account that'll come out of that or on top of that that has to go into an account that is there in case you do have, break a leg or something like that.
Yeah.
And you can't use that unless you get signed off by your supervisor anyways. But that way you, if we put it all into paid time off and let you use it however you wanted to, then it kind of could come up that you do get hurt after you've used all their time and then you don't have anything. So it's kind of forcing you to keep that account of hours. And it also, so that way if somebody says they're sick and you see them golfing, well, maybe they need a mental health day. You approve it for them to be gone.
Yeah, and you don't.
But it doesn't matter what it is.
It doesn't matter, right?
It doesn't matter, it's your paid time off.
It's your paid time off and that's why they said, we said it like that.
Are all the employees behind this?
Well, I've spoken to all my employees, yes.
How, how many of our employees are currently using up their sick days?
Um.
Towards zero now.
Yeah, well.
Well, depends on if they're working hard on.
Towards zero, towards zero, are we using a lot of them?
Very few.
Very few.
I can think of two in the last year.
But it just depend, you know, it depends, you know, if you have kids, you know, there was a point at my previous job, I owed the bank hours because my middle son had ear infection constantly and I was gone from work all the time, taken him to the doctor. So it, and it, there's just.
And it also has, um, one thing that was important to me is that we have some carryover hours. Um, there is a cap, you can't carry over all your hours and then end up with, you know, ungodly amount of hours and then you just say, oh, I quit today and you're going to pay me for a year. We're not doing it like that, but there is some carryover because right now, as it sits, it gets reset every time your anniversary date of hire is zeros out. Well, we've had it to where someone is having a child after their, um, anniversary date. So right, so they save up all this time, they're going to have a kid, then it gets zeroed out, so then they can't use or they don't have enough time off. So this gives them the chance to carry some over and that way us as supervisors don't get.
They have to.
I don't have to.
Yes.
That's a different, totally different conversation. But also, um, so also, so we as supervisors, especially me and Jeff, don't get strong-armed into, oh, it's my anniversary date. I use it or lose it, so you're not going to make me work and I can lose my.
Can you guys think of any reason that we would not want to go forward with this?
We have to resolve an issue with Jeff's crew because they work regularly forty-hour fixed weeks. Like Shane's group works staggered forty-hour weeks, but Jeff's are into this.
Right.
We need to resolve how that would work for him. But we can work out the fine details if you agree that PTO is the way to go. We'll come up.
Well, this would be final approval today, would it?
Not necessarily.
Not if you want us to tweak it a little bit more. As far as like office, office help, like regular eight to five Monday through Friday, office help. It fits my office, register of deeds, treasurer, auditor's office, and then also Nicole. Um, because she's eight to five, she's, she's down on the highway departments, four, four tents or whatever, but and then, you know, Chelsea, well, I guess, and Hannah and Chris Hannah and Rebecca.
But I think you guys can figure something out on the four tents.
Yes.
So they could work it out. I mean, you sort of remember what's the problem with it.
Well, a lot of this was driven off days off. Well, you can't, our days are not the same as his days, they're not the same as Shane's days. But Shane has more flexibility than Jeff does because his crew works every day of the week, not just four days in a week.
So I can schedule around, certainly at time, but Jeff can't.
So you're talking like salary versus hourly?
No, salary, a salary, that plays.
No, and Ty is another example because he's working four tents right now. One week he works three, then he works four, and three.
You're talking about just converting what we have to date?
They're trying to convert what we've got now.
Yeah, I got you.
Then basically what's on.
Basically, yes.
What are the potential proposals that would work for you guys? The four tent crowd.
Work weekends, yeah.
Maybe we should approve it for the offices here for now and then figure out how that's going to.
No, you, you gotta, you gotta do it all, they all have their.
Well, then we're going to get the details, don't we?
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm going to share, I'm going to give to you as far as the highway being a little different than us office is what the four tents. In my research, I do not believe that we can give them a separate thing in lower hours as far as how many days off they get off a year, like the regular, because they're still working the same amount of hours.
Right.
They just don't work on Friday. So I just wanted to say that, we can't just say, oh, well, we're going to go with the ones that work in the office a hundred and eighty-eight hours since they work twenty years or more, but the ones in the highway department that work twenty-eight years or more are only going to get a hundred and fifty-eight hours. We're going to have a problem if that happens.
With the same hours, it's not a thing, you know.
Yes, in my opinion, because.
Yeah, I got, I got, yeah.
Okay, I actually also want to.
Every PTO for every week, every holiday, so.
Like, yeah. In my mind, it needs to be the same and it just needs to be managed in a good way.
It's a management issue.
It's, it, it managed in a good way. And all the people that have this PTO need to look at it and say, okay, in June, it's, it's going to start on January one. On May thirty-first, how's my PTO setting? Oh, jeez, I've only used two days. I might need to schedule a couple of days in, in June and July and take off because I don't want to lose my PTO.
That was the question I just had, okay, we decide to, we're going to go with the PTO.
Right.
Playing devil's advocate here. We're going to go with the PTO, so if everybody's anniversary now is going to be January first.
Right.
What happens at the end of December, nobody shows up for work?
Well, that, like, that was a part of the trend comes in, that's why.
That's where they have to be managed at.
They have to, like, and, and there's nothing wrong with that, like, you, like, you can do it for, you can do it on March thirty-first, okay. Jim, Bob, no, you guys need to stay some time off.
So in other words, the point we're saying is it's not going to be a problem for us.
It's not.
It's going to be, it's going to be the head of the department's problem.
That's my, that's my opinion, I don't know.
Oh, no, no, absolutely not possible.
Will that work for you?
Yeah, it's going to be working.
It'll be a work in progress, it's going to take a while.
Do you have a.
Well, there's a lot of people.
Do you have a system that tracks this?
Yeah, right in our payroll, paycheck.
But I mean.
And it will be more, more accurate now on, on the paycheck.
But I mean, as far as then requesting it, it's just simply they.
They just, well, they're going to be gone. Nicole will say to me, hey, Jenny, I have a basketball game to leave, I would like to leave at noon next week. I mean, it's not that hard, you know, but you're not going to have to pay for that in a push.
Forty guys, right.
Sorry, it's just not that hard.
Well, just for, yeah, he's got one, but I'm talking with Jeff, he's got forty people there.
Right, like, he has, right, he has a secretary.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, there's.
But first you don't, but first there's going to be grown things, I want to get some.
Yeah, but you'll figure it out, you know, like.
It's. I literally, I don't have problems, they didn't toss the county a nickel and if you guys are going to manage it, I don't have a problem.
Is, is.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
And that was the one that ended up coming up was the paying out when somebody retires or leaves the job.
Hey.
Has that come up yet? Mr. Renan, you hear it?
No, so we're going to have twenty percent, I guess, like, let's say, let's say Doug retires today. He's going to get twenty percent of what he has left in his extended leave and whatever he has left of his PTO.
Was it cash payment?
Yes.
And it's not forty percent of the year, it's twenty percent.
It's twenty percent and then whatever is left in your paid time off. So if you have eighty hours in your paid time off, you get, you get paid for that and then twenty percent if you have anything left in your extended leave.
What are we doing now?
Twenty-five percent of sick leave.
Of the seven hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah.
Is, the way I look at this, isn't it just going to turn into, um, more vacation days a year? And then when somebody's sick, they're spelled out for it, they just don't get paid?
Well, we do.
That's what they extended leave is for.
Right, and we've, we talked about that in the meeting. Um, if we, if you guys choose to implement this, we would like to provide a form for each employee that this is going to affect, that they have read the policy, they understand what the policy is and to be a mature, responsible adults about it.
That's where we go on.
But and to, to plan for things, like leave it so, hey, I have five days in case I'm sick or, or whatever. I mean, I know that that sounds harsh, but it's, it's just. I know that that sounds harsh, but it's, it's just the truth.
We as departments have very least.
And we, we ultimately can say, no, you're not taking the day off, it doesn't work in the office today.
It's just different.
That's a supervisor's.
That's the way it is now.
And that's the way it is now. Like, I'm really sorry, you know, we can't go to Disneyland on.
What this really solves is people lying about being sick?
Right.
No, because honestly, if, this gives me a little bit of a.
No, it's a lot of.
This gives you the opportunity to say to your employee, if this is paid time off, yours here, your coffee bar, what was the name? I'm, you're going home today. You're gonna use the paid, you're, you're gonna use some of your PTO today.
We got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted with regard to the offices in the courthouse. Exactly on paper, how this will unfold, but not yet for the highway department, correct, or for.
That is completely up to the highway department, I'm not gonna speak for them.
Okay.
I, yeah, and since.
Is it committed to writing the policy so that it's understandable?
It's, in my mind, in my mind, it's ready to go.
It's admissible.
It's admissible.
Okay, not in written form yet, though, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
All three ready, all three done.
Okay. My, I, I see.
I was just gonna say, did, very often with PTO time, but they can also carry over it and put it into their extended leave also.
I like it.
And build that extended leave up, so let's say they have, they're a new employee and they have eighty hours of PTO left.
Right.
They can carry over all of it and put it, dump it, whatever, they can have the five days just out here. And then whatever's left goes into that extended leave, so they can build that up to plan for having a baby or whatever, you know? Or God forbid, somebody gets cancer and has to get chemo or, or that kind of stuff.
But it is capped at seven hundred and twenty.
But it is capped at seven hundred and twenty.
Removing.
Do I hear a second?
Did we?
I, I don't have a lot of problem, but I think we need to resolve.
I don't think there's, I don't think there'll be a problem there. Do you?
Yeah.
He says he.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I still don't understand what the problem with.
I don't have a problem probably for the courthouse, I would like to visit tomorrow with you guys.
Awesome. Come on up there.
Hmm?
Is it come on up?
Well, and maybe someone else needs to come up with a solution, cause I don't know how their office, you know.
Right. But I don't think the county can run too separate, I mean, also.
No, absolutely.
No.
Completely. We're really gonna have to stay with what we got or try this.
The market, I have no problem, I guess, not, not really.
What do you, I get, Jeff, why don't you come up, what do you, what do you think the problem's gonna be?
I think the anniversary from January to December mostly.
But I, now, I was, I was telling you, I, I've got, uh, people that I know that are employees. At the beginning of the year, January, they fill out their calendar for the year.
Yeah.
Of when they're gonna be off. And they gotta hand it in to their supervisor, their supervisor goes through it and if everybody's taking off at the same time, he goes back and say, hey, this isn't gonna happen.
Uh, it could probably work out.
I think, I think it's, I think the biggest thing is so people don't hold everything to the very. The ones you're gonna have a problem with is the ones that are already maxed out on their, um.
Sick leave.
Sick leave. They're the ones that you're gonna have a problem with, cause they're gonna say, well, I'm not, I gotta use it or I'm gonna lose it, cause I got no work. I got no, I can't put it anywhere anymore. In their case, they're gonna have to figure out that you ain't gonna get to take it all in December. You, you could end up with, if everybody, since everybody's gonna start in January, December's gonna be the month when people are gonna say, oh, wait a minute. Uh, I agree with, it has to be looked at through the whole year.
Yeah.
And that's the biggest thing, is the employees gonna have to figure that out for themselves, that they gotta, they can't wait till the very end.
No offense, no matter what your, what your date to go to zero is, people are gonna wait till the last minute to. They're gonna kinda be the same way every time because they don't think ahead and I'm sorry if you do that, it's your fault, you lost it, sorry.
Right.
And you can't take them off right now, it's just not.
I guess that's, that's, I mean, I guess is that, that's what you're more worried about is everybody going to the very end and wanting to use those days.
Right, and, and my mind, like, um.
Not for the average period.
So the average working adult probably that has PTO probably schedules in their life at least a, a week away from work. So you're gonna subtract out five days off the top, okay? And then any other adult would look at it and go, okay, if I divide twelve months by the, the remaining hours that I have, I can take off a day and a half a month. And then I won't have any, to any issue of not running out of it and not using it.
But what's gonna get problems is you run tents, but you guys run a lot.
It's just that, just think of it as hours.
Yeah, it's hours.
Just hours, that's.
You know, because the day, so if they take a day off, it's gonna be ten whole hours, not just eight. So, and I had, I was listening downstairs, um.
You're that one.
No, you're not. I, um, worked a job before coming here where it was mandated that you had to have, like, you're worried about at the end of the year, people failing completely. I worked a job where it was mandated, you had X number of employees who had to be on site at the end of the month or at the end of the year. So it was first come, first served for end of the year. So that forced everybody to get your time off for Christmas, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, force you to get it in early. Supervisor approved or disapproved, whatever they felt appropriate so that there was staff available. So I mean, that would, that could be a department head, this example.
And we have two weeks in my department.
Yeah.
Before we tell them, I'll have them.
Yeah, you have to have a schedule that you're gonna take a lengthy consecutive time off.
I would say we have approval for eight, and.
Yeah.
Well, we've got kind of lax, to be honest with you, there's times when somebody will spontaneously say, yeah, I have a day off. I mean, we need to get back to where they're requesting it in advance, you know.
So this is where it works.
Yeah.
We're about to be a big, you know, they have to be understood by everybody.
I just foresee, I don't know, I foresee this being abused and, um, also the, like what Shane said, the employees that just literally. Aren't gonna look more than half a day ahead of what they're wanting to do.
We'll figure it out.
Department head has to be in charge, we have to take the reins and decide.
Right, and I would just make it, part of your, part of your thing is, is request to record from the auditor's office quarterly. That it shows the PTO hours that are left and then you can look to see who's got.
Can we put on, on your paste out or whatever?
It is.
If it's ready.
As far as department heads, like if you wanted to sum it, all of his employees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he can, he can get it somewhere.
I mean, I think it's be, it's certainly gonna be a transition, but I, I come from two large companies that has a, had a, uh, system just like this and it worked fine.
You just gotta get used to it.
You just, yeah, it's one of those things, one, one of them that did transition from a more traditional vacation sick leave. And it was a pain for a little while, but then everybody got used to it, so.
Does it put an undue burden on the supervisor who has to oversee each one of these requests?
The set is, I think it'll, it probably cancels out, cause, I mean, it lessens the burden because people were so concerned about using vacation time or sick leave before. And policing the, well, are you sick or is this actually vacation, so now they don't have to worry about it. And again, and it does put some on them, so they make sure that they have people there at any given point. And those companies were both seasonal like we are here, so it, I mean, pretty much everybody just knew that, all right, here are the months that it's probably gonna, I'm gonna be denied leave if I try to take a week off or something like that.
If somebody is denied leave, what, uh, redress do they have? Can they go to the county commission and say, my boss won't let me have a week off?
But you can always, I mean, there's always the red.
And to be over.
You guys, to us.
You could, yeah, but I would, like, I would, I would caution us against doing or having a procedure like that, I would just say the supervisor is.
Right.
For the most part, the final word on the situation.
And as a supervisor, you kinda know your busy times of your year, so my employee knows when our busy times are, so she doesn't, that's essentially necessary, we don't take time off then. Like when the taxes are due, you know, or when we're doing taxes, we try not to take those off. So I think in the eyes of the supervisor, they need to try to tell employees, you know, these months, if you can take some vacation, extended vacations, you're kind of, you know, when you're busy.
Yeah, people know that, and, and worried, the ones that you're worried about that are gonna max out their sick leave, those ones aren't gonna be banking anything till the end of the year. They're, if they're not maxing their sick leave off, they're not gonna have any PTO by the time the end of the year comes around, so.
Does the Fair Labor Standards Act have any impact on any of this?
No.
Or is it irrelevant?
First off, just told her.
My one question I had, when I looked at before was the, when we transitioned from PTO to extended leave. I was kinda thinking we're, that there's gonna be some kind of a timeframe of needing to use, like a five days of PTO before you got into extended leave.
There is.
It's not, I didn't know that, see it anywhere.
It's on the second page.
It's on the second page.
I guess.
Um, there's.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was thinking it was up above in that first part, or it just says, yeah.
So we have two employees that are in Jeff's department that are very close to maxing or are maxed. So I'll figure out a way to pull that into the new system so that those people don't lose anything they were here. The rest of employees are below that threshold, so.
Yeah, as I was gonna say, there's only, there's only somebody that's maxed out on their sick leave now is gonna be the, the carryovers.
Right.
Gonna be meaningless to it. Well, this year they would have anyway, because you can only be seven hundred and twenty hours of sick leave regardless of the program now.
We're not.
Or we're not.
And if there's a list of hours somewhere else that they think that they have, that means that there shouldn't be.
There shouldn't be, I mean, you get seven hundred and twenty hours as the max that you can build.
Yeah, it was being put on the paste outs. And so we checked into fixing that and then like did the fix and it didn't work. It still shows up, there's always that one.
I would second Jim's motion to approve it.
All those in favor?
This is, this will be effective January first.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
You can say this in the word discussion, you can work it out on, on your.
You can work at it, you can probably make it work, it's gonna take a little.
Well, it's, it's, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be growing things for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to take care of the people that do have the seven hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to step on that, that's.
No. No, we should keep you, any hours that they have accrued.
Otherwise, we can work it out, we can try.
All those in favor, yeah, unless there's any more questions. All those in favor of going to PTO?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Name.
Most.
Andy, you wanna do this one or you want me to do it?
Um.
All right. Anyway, here we go, through the memorandum of understanding with S D S U for four H director. We are a county employed director as opposed to a state employed director, or shared director. They did change the M O U from last year. And the number one concern that was brought up by other counties was that when there's programming that takes place, that we inherit the liability of it. But the general consensus has been, and tell me if this is wrong, but there's already an S D S U waiver somewhere? And then we would ask the participants to sign the same waiver?
I'm not real sure how it all shakes out, but what it stems from is that, um, any chartered entity with the state can't purchase insurance or sign leases.
Or what?
Or sign lease agreements.
What kind of programming are you referring to?
Well, this.
I don't, what with a four H?
This would be four H grounds, we have a lease, the leaders association has a lease with Seversons. Um, they also have a lease with the city of St. Lawrence to rent the park building to do shooting sports. Um, the way that they found out that state law rates, because they are now a chartered entity with the state, we can't, the leaders association can't enter into those leases because they're part of the state entity. And it's, they can't do that because state.
So how?
That's where the, the county would be, have to take over those lease agreements and the liability insurance for those places or else we wouldn't be able to.
Are they long-term leases presently or are they usually?
Uh, the one with St. Lawrence is an annual lease, and basically it's, it allow, it just says that we have some form of liability insurance and we pay the propane every year. The leaders will still be responsible for paying the propane, we just would be the centers on the lease. We should, I don't know if we can do the sub, with sub letters or not, um, but you have to take on the liability insurance, um, for all that. And the lease with Seversons says every ten years.
Where are we at in that, halfway through?
They just renewed it.
So they have another ten years, roughly.
We would probably have to redo that.
You would have to, you would have to redo that lease, I, we haven't begun the lease for the St. Lawrence building yet. But, um, we wouldn't be able to carry our liability insurance either for those facilities. And right now, the school requires any entity that uses their facilities to have a million dollar liability policy, so that would probably eliminate us. Unless we had some kind of liability insurance from, some proof of insurance from the county, um, we wouldn't be able to use the school facilities. But we also have, um, liability, we have that coverage policy that we use for the school, um, can we use that to cover the Luther insurance to St. Lawrence Park? Um, the fire hall, the, and, um, I think there's one other place that our clubs do a lot of meetings. I was just kind of a cover, a blanket policy to make sure that everybody's covered there.
It covers those places, but it won't cover.
Currently it covers the school, but technically, we're not supposed to have that insurance policy.
Says?
This thing.
S D S U.
What's that thinking, right?
I don't know, that's about my behavior, this is just what I was told to ask.
It's about everybody's behavior, you know? Someone else would. We wouldn't inherit those liabilities.
We'd inherit those liabilities.
Do you feel like? Come on, do I feel this correct?
No.
Do we need to have someone from there to cover it? Fifteen years ago, I wanted to borrow or wanted to have tower space on the towers off the top of Sunshine. They wanted two million dollars, even if our equipments are bashed, but theirs don't. So like, if they could start relaxing, they would use our policy. So I think it's just a strategy in the state for reserving. Make some money from that.
Top it off on ours.
And I was told it was in the state, state laws, it's not in the policy policy. But I do know that if you don't sign the M O U, then there's no four H program.
That, correct, so.
And our shares company has provisions for us to take fees on. We would use those waivers when it's appropriate, other times we would.
So we could work it into our current coverage, mean?
Yes.
We're gonna have to be a little diligent on having people sign stuff if we feel that's the way we're gonna do it, though.
Right. Shooting sports is probably the only one we'd. Unless, I don't know, we ever think in range officers, at least.
Yeah, my range op, my range officers are these certified range officers, they do good for certification, they are certified volunteers. Um, you know, every, every four H event has to have a certified volunteer at it. And so shooting sports is, they have an additional certification policy that they, or protocol that they have to go to, so they are certified range officers as well.
Is this kind of coverage, uh, for a calendar year when we acquire, or is it for a fiscal year that starts in March, ends in?
I would assume it's for the calendar year as long as the M O U is active.
Okay, if shooting sports, I think you told me yesterday, starts the tenth of January.
Yeah.
If we don't sign this M O U.
If we don't sign, there's no four Hs.
We don't have any shooting sports starting on the tenth of January, correct?
Correct. Correct. Basically, if you don't sign up until the end of the year, as December thirty-one.
Not 4H sponsored shooting sports, you mean, right?
Right.
Maybe that's more of the, one before he sponsors.
Right. Okay, and we can arrange to have that kind of coverage in place by the tenth of January?
We can do blanket coverage, or we can do per event coverage. You buy one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
For shooting sports, I have two different locations. We do it at the, we do firearms at the, and we do archery at St. Lawrence. And then in the summer, we do shotgun out to Dean Vansys. That would be the first.
Somebody maybe don't have any dollars.
No.
Dollars we're talking about?
For the insurance. After we figure out what all of our programming is, then you can give us.
So do we have to prove for the years that we?
I would suggest that you do, because there is a way to escape out of it, but it would kill 4H.
I move that we. Now you're second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't think SDSU has a choice. It would have to be something that you do through here. Cause it, it seems to be across all of us.
I would say they're forcing, they're across the board for all of it. And plus, there's gonna be changes coming down with minors on campus policy. As well, it's gonna impact our lineup there as well.
Doesn't Jay hand us through the?
Thank you.
Figure out whether it's something expensive.
Yeah, it's game, right? Dave?
Hey.
Dave?
Dave. Everybody knows.
You're approved.
Okay.
All right.
You heard that.
Um, I'm sorry to let you know that the library board has approved, interviewed and approved somebody to start on with us as soon as possible. And so I think the next step is your approval. It is Kathy Harvey for three hours a week and a weekend a month, so nineteen to twenty-two hours per month. And it took us a long time to find applicants, but we did have two in the interview process.
I move we approve that higher.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Tara from Long Island Development. Sorry I have not named my parents here yet to talk to you guys, but I've been trying to learn my job. Um, the first thing I did when I started in April was I, you know, a lot of people were telling me, we need a dentist, we need a dentist, we need a dentist. So I started researching some things, and I got ahold of Delta Dental, who is, they have a mobile truck, and, um, we thought we had a list, but then I guess we weren't. So I made sure that we were, and, um, got all the logistics and everything. And they called me and said, we can come this week, you know, they set the days, they don't, we can come this week, and we will do cleanings only, because we can't find a dentist either, that truck. And we need a place to park and a place to, for kids to wait. So I said, I can do that. So, uh, we did it at the community center. I would, um, I lined up all the scheduling. She, um, and there were two, no, there's one, a dentist, and she would go back. She got a lot of kids. Um, she did, I have a, I actually have something to show you guys, because this is, this is the final, what they did. So I wrote the scheduling, and then I would, um, let the families know when they're going, and then to come like ten minutes early, and then we would, I would walk them to the truck. Anyway, when it was all said and done, they sent me these sheets, and they serviced fifty-seven kids, and it's only for kids, there's no adults. But she served, um, fifty-seven kids, and it was thirty-two thou, thirty-two thousand dollars worth of dental work for free for, for our Hand County kids. Um, I took pretty much the Hand County kids, and then if we had openings, a lot of it was kids that didn't have dental care already. But then we ended up having some at the end that, um, some of the appointments at the end, so then we could get other kids in as well, so, that, just for cleaning. And then next year, um, we've already set up a date, uh, July twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, two, twenty-twenty-four. And that one hopefully is gonna have a dentist on it, so. And that does, there is a fee, but I've already, um, got all of that taken care of. So, um, the children still will not have to pay.
So they, do they leave, like, especially she doesn't give suggestions, or maybe he, on the, like, do you really need to go and see a dentist or?
Well, if, if there's something really, really bad, they can refer them, but she's not a dentist, so she couldn't really stay.
Is that what this is? It says refer to pedo, or that is?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, if there's something really bad, then she can refer him to a dentist. I think there's one in Watertown or something, I don't know that, that she refers him to, so. She didn't tell me the specifics on that, she just, they just sent me this. So I'm looking forward to them coming again, and hopefully we can, I'm still looking for a dentist whole time, but if we can get our kids in, I think that's pretty important, so. Um, also just a few other things. Um, I applied, look over, her and I applied for the planning grant for the daycare. Um, and we got it, we got fifty thousand dollars. So we are working on the plans. And then we're automatically in for the implementation grant as well. If we get all of our planning done, then we could possibly get a lot more through that. So I was glad that I could help her with that.
Is, could that be used for salary stuff, or is it just?
Eventually, the implementation, you know, I think six months for salary, but right now, the planning grant is just our plan, what we're doing. And so, you know, we're, we have some options that are, that we, that we had to put it all in a document and tell them what we wanted to do with that, and if we did receive the money. So then, now we have to do that, and then the implementation grant would help us further. So hopefully we can, the waiting list is long, I'm gonna try to cut that. Um, I did the shop local at the elementary school, that went over well. Um, I'm gonna speak to them. I did the shop on Saturday down on Main Street. And then, um, I also, uh, did a hus, housing grant, so I applied for housing grant, and I did get that as well. So it was a really good month for me in November.
The infrastructure money.
The infrastructure money, yes.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Hundred seventy-six thousand.
Seventy-six.
And I have that there, so I was pretty tickled.
So is that gonna be used, you have something in mind specifically for that?
The housing development.
Housing.
Housing development out there, right?
Yep. So hopefully we can figure something out for.
Is there a water study done on that property?
I believe so. I was told that there were, there was a whole thing done out there.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand too.
I, I heard calls about what's going on out here.
Yeah, cause initially there was, someone had done it, and then now he had someone else do it. You probably said, I'm gonna say person, yes, yeah. And it was a good, it was good.
Yes. Wait, everybody thought it was gonna be water cables, water, they thought.
Yes. Yep.
They would not have granted the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, had there not been a water study done in that property, correct?
No, I didn't have to say it in there.
That didn't have to end there?
I'm surprised, but.
Yeah, I never had to put that in there. I just, um, since we haven't, since we don't have the infrastructure in yet, it was, you know, you're starting from scratch, so this is what we need to do, and the engineers haven't set up anything yet, but this is what they would do if they did, type of thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it was a big process, but hopefully we can figure out something with that too, so. Any questions? Thanks for having me.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
If you have one plan here, Gemma, it's the one that we had during last month, erroneously, because we didn't have its possession. We do have a possession.
Are you sure?
Remove on it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Kim and Jim?
Aye.
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 All right, so as far as the hearing goes, um, there's a resolution. Do you want me to print one for all of you, or do you want to just adhere it to it?
That's this one here.
It's on here, I think.
Yeah, it's on there. I'll just open it up here. So my objective in doing this now is so that we're not crunched at the end of the month, maybe the year for doing this at the end of. And then we'll do another one at the end of the year, so that we can exit the year in good shape. But what I'm asking you to look at is the real infrastructure, real access infrastructure grant. We're forty-nine hundred and fourteen dollars short, and so that supplement would pull funds out of the, the actual Rafe Fund, put it into the Rafe expenditure budget, so that we can zero that out. And then elections, um, elections again went over because we didn't anticipate the opt-out election, so everything that we were expecting just kinda boiled over. So we're looking at another five thousand dollars, no, we're on the line, three thousand eighty-three dollars and change to bring that one flush, and then emergency management. This is, so his original budget was eighty-five thousand dollars, and then we got the five thousand dollars from Buffalo County. And then we also have the normal transfer from general fund to emergency management. So that would make that flush, plus at the end of the year, if there's leftovers, it stays in emergency management. He has funds out for you next year. And then the road and bridge, this is a question, because it depends on what you get to decide. So let me talk about domestic abuse. Um, the domestic abuse expenditures, fifteen hundred dollars, that's what we pay to the shelter in Redfield, and we've historically done that year after year after year, but we don't have the traditional revenue sources to pay that. So we, we either supplement that budget by putting money into it to make up the whole fifteen hundred.
Would it come out of commissioner's contingency?
It can, but it's its own fund. So it's easier just to pull it from its own fund, and then take whatever's missed, and then it can do that, so.
Okay.
But either way, it would come out of general fund, so.
Maybe we don't have our normal revenue source there?
Uh, it's based on filing fees, the registered fees offices for like marriage licenses, and we can have a lot of marriages, so.
Were you getting anything out of divorces?
That's what I, that's what I.
I was gonna say, that's part of divorce. That was under domestic violence.
Oh.
Yeah, but in a different way. Yes, but it doesn't amount to much. So with that, what I wanna do is just take you over and talk to you about the financial report.
Quickly, I'm the, um, emergency management, Pete, we're expecting grant money for that before the end of the year, though?
We got, we got money from Buffalo County, and we're gonna get paid back for his quarterly thing, which I don't expect that until January, to be honest with you.
You mean from the state?
Yeah, because they're a lot slower than they claim to be. And then we just have the normal general fund transfer, which is our portion of emergency management.
But there, I just, there was the grant for the radio, or the last month, didn't he?
Oh, radios?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still expecting that. Yeah, I just, this is supposed to be a flush.
I got you. Okay.
All right, so the fund report, after, let's see, what was the date of that first? So the general fund, a one point two million dollars in it, some of that is reserved for purposes, like, we're gonna talk later about the, uh, giveaway money, and then we also got two different extensions of the ARPA money, which is what I had just helped to be about using for the West entrance. So just think of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are being reserved for other things. The road and bridge funded itself going into this year, thirty-seven thousand, two thirty. That's in the hole now, because of bills today. So at some point, you have to figure out what you're gonna transfer in there, covers this year, and get it started on that.
Do we decide that today, or on that last meeting of the year?
I would do it today.
What figure should we be using?
Uh, that, that's my question to you guys, because I don't, I don't wanna be the one that does it wrong.
I don't have any idea.
It's Ronnie Blaschman just saying, and I wanna be live. All right, so let's go to the second part, but we'll talk about expenditures. So you get to the bottom. So as far as we'll talk about revenues. Um, if you take out the hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we got for the wind towers, then you can see that our normal revenue was about where we expected it to be. If you look at road and bridge, you can see that it's a hundred and seventy-nine, but just up, taking into account one point four million dollars of transfers. So if you take that out, your balance estimate is not five hundred thousand. So it was pretty close, based on what we projected going into the year. It was just all these other events that made it look nothing. They got marked each one.
Guys, I think, I think they're backwards, or they're both the same thing?
They are, they're both same thing. So I can't tell you that hundred is in my head, off the top of my head, but today, but today, you approved a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in bills. So if I were a crystal ball, that's not, it is purely a crystal ball, and go back to the resolution, I would suggest to you that if you look at this line right here, so the forty percent rule says that we can't have more than forty percent sitting in the general fund. And that forty percent is based off the general fund budget. So that amount is one point four five three million dollars, that's how much we can carry over. Currently, it was sitting at one thirty-two, or one thirty-five, one point three five, minus the one sixty-eight, so about one point two. So my crystal ball says, transfers seven fifty? Seven hundred fifty thousand? Are you looking at your calculator?
We don't wanna wait till, till the very end, that's what you're saying, no? You just seem to do it now.
So it's about seven fifty, or what do you, are you using some sort of calculation on the road and bridge for expenditures, or?
I was gonna show you what he expected, what he has left for budget authority this year, and then some to begin next year.
Which, last month, I guess he was.
You're saying on the line on the road and bridge, it's like seven fifty? I think seven fifty would be enough. If this year, again, you started in. I have enough to work with in January, in February.
So then we reduce this to July. Half million by half, roughly, right?
Correct.
And not even more than half.
But it's still considered.
Just someone has to wash the PTO.
Yeah.
We'd be down to like half a million.
What is that road and bridge money?
Uh, Jeff, you got the check yet? No. Still waiting for the option. How much was it?
Two hundred, maybe, four hundred, I think.
And that's not accounted for in here at all?
No, because it was decided to pay it right to the bank.
It'll just go right to the bank, right, on that note?
That'd be a percentage of that, or.
Oh. If you wanna do five hundred thousand, and we can revisit it through the month, I'm fine with that too. It's, it's safer way to go.
I guess what's the difference? I mean, if we have too much in there, it's just gonna be carried over.
Right.
Correct? I mean.
They were well under forty, so it would've worried.
And then, I mean, there's a risk in the general fund, so.
We hope not.
We hope not.
We're close enough to the end of the year.
Yeah.
The weird part is, is that magically, we just don't get a bunch of money in January, so.
Yeah. But as far as, I mean, other than the road and bridge, and, uh, through the end of the year, it's fairly predictable what all the other departments should do.
Well, because it represents our biggest fictitional liability, that's why I'm comfortable with it on that one there.
Yeah.
You said seven or seven fifty?
Seven.
I would move, insert the seven hundred fifty thousand and.
You don't have to do it, we can just apply.
To the fact that.
Approve.
Or sign it, and then we have to.
Approve.
I mean, we're okay with passing this resolution, we should pass it today, or that number in there.
Right.
You're not planning a big Christmas party this year, are you?
No.
Okay, might, wanna make a BYOB then.
I would approve, I would, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three with the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer to the road and bridge.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, we gotta do the roll call.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Then we'll look at it at the end of the month. Do you even have Christmas parties anymore?
Jeff, have you spent more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Ready to move on?
Yes.
Opioid. Several months ago, I had presented to you the approved list of things that we could use the opioid number for. And Jane and I were visiting last week, and we think we have a solution for you, and we wanna pitch it to you. Part of the program specifications allow for public education. So we talked about, should I say your name? Same if we can get Angela Kanki to come do a community presentation, like maybe hit the school, school hours and then the community on later?
Yeah, I spoke with the school today, so we're working on dates.
Okay. So we would need that consent. Normally, this would have been something that they'd want, the people that come up with this, we'd want you guys to decide. We're just giving you an idea.
Sounds like you're getting a food snack. How much is it, Doug? The distribution?
What did it say? Ten?
Ten dollars a year?
And we get that, we're gonna get that every year.
Is it twice a year, though?
Eighteen, well, it was this year.
Okay.
Because they did a second lawsuit.
So it's twenty-sixty?
No, I would say ten collectively. Because one was bigger, one lawsuit was
Was it a new or loose thing, two then?
Yes, because I have to do report forms on what we're gonna use it for, and if they don't like it, then they stop funding us.
And there's, I was looking at this, and yes, there's a lot of different, I mean, there's like twelve pages of things that we could use it for, and a lot of it is uh, directed towards treatment centers and education and hospital staff education, things like that, and, uh,
Law enforcement.
Community, uh, law enforcement, community, uh, community awareness.
Not candy, but not candy.
We get that for free anyways, but since we don't have treatment centers, I think this is one of the, one, a good way to use this to spread awareness, especially through our schools. The, that, especially with the fentanyl crisis that we're in.
Can we use it for drug dog expenses?
I don't know, no, you can, I don't wanna say. No, you cannot. It is for personnel training and community awareness, things like that. What me and Doug had talked about was forming a committee, like an opioid committee, where we could do the, people decide what we're gonna do with this and continuing, and do include some of that hospital staff and some training and things like that, so. I don't, I don't think this is, we could use this as supplemental for any programs we already have. It didn't look like anything that we approved that way strictly for, we need to go out fighting it.
So you have to submit what we're planning here and then make out if it's gonna be covered. No, actually, they'd tell us afterwards if it was.
Yeah, we, I think this is
This clearly would be.
Oh, yeah, I
And then future ones would be like this committee would look at, and this one actually, too.
Right.
Well.
But if you screw up one time and use it for some inappropriate purpose, you don't get it the next year.
I wouldn't say that, no.
I don't know.
No, that's not how.
Well, I think what they It's not other, we would have to cover whatever the cost is. That's, that's as old as you get.
Do we have, uh, much of an education effort underway at this, through the school system? On just spending?
Not specifically targeting, targeting, I mean, drug awareness and things like that, but no, I don't.
Maybe we can use it for that. Maybe we can use it for that.
Absolutely.
So is that with?
Angela, that's where, what, uh, maybe like an event?
She, she, uh, yeah, she has a Emily's Hope.
Emily's Hope.
And, uh, she comes and she speaks to schools and tells, tells her story with that one.
Did you watch the Kell News last night?
No, last night.
She was talking about a program that I think is administered through the police department in Sioux Falls, where they are going to download hours that are drug addicted in Sioux Falls. And I think they're administering tests to them in the street and getting them into medical care immediately, but it's fentanyl tests that they're administering on the streets in Sioux Falls, not right now.
No, we'll overlook them. Yeah.
So what would you say, like in Han County, where do we set this far as?
We're definitely on the better end, and it's, uh, we just sent away one guy for distribution of fentanyl. Uh, who was a local. But it was, that was a very small part of his operation, so it's pre, it's still, we don't see it a lot, a couple times a year probably. And, but opioid, and that's the fentanyl. Opioids are always around any technically other medicine cabinet, so we've, because they're sneaky mills, so that's.
Got some visitors.
Yep.
People suppose have been.
It hasn't appeared like it has in other places, so. But we, like our medical staff and our kids should be aware of it before.
And their parents.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's gonna be good. I mean, it's a good way to use the money. Kind of sounds to me like we even lose it. Usually lose it. So you, you, you've been in contact already, just, you're just waiting to hear back?
We're working on dates, yeah.
So is there anyone in the five that would be interested in being on that panel?
I would.
Okay. As long as it isn't Wednesday night.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Unless you have a question, okay?
You go first, I'll go.
Okay, the next part is the Department of Revenue Property Tax Team. They reviewed our means of finance and they discovered an error in there, which is that there's an age-old law that says that we reserve twenty-five percent of our property tax levy for the citizens. That number is frozen in time at five thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. I didn't check the spreadsheet because it was the state spreadsheet, and it was out. It did not subtract that amount. So I had to redo it. So the amount, the result was that the total net taxes went from two million four hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine to two million four hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-three, and thus the cash applied went from one million seventy-seven thousand two fifty-seven to one million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three. Which means that our budget resolution that we passed is to be redone. And if you are okay with that explanation, then I will draw that up, and then we'll get it to you for signatures.
When was it frozen, nineteen thirty-four?
Long time ago. In fact, I don't even think Sandy knew what she told me. It was some sort of effort to mitigate bad feelings when personal property taxes disappeared. So how long ago was that?
Jeez. Forty years.
So if you would, I'd ask you to make a motion to amend that resolution to that degree.
So, who?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Aye.
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 Okay, so then I'll draw that up and then I'll circulate it for signatures, since we've recorded your vote.
Do we have to have that signed by all of us individually prior to December or January first?
Yeah, I'll give it to you this week. Because then I have to send it to P R. Um, just for your information, the Indigent Legal Services Task Force completed their summer study, their final report recommendations are in that link. Um, there's a lot of stuff in there that you just wanna breeze over, but ultimately, if you get to the summary part of it, then you'll kind of see how court appointed attorneys are changing the fee structures across the state. And then the next link is the unified judicial systems annual report, and that's the same thing, it's good for the summary. And you'll kind of see what's going on with the court system. If we can go back over the cash fund expenditure revenues if you'd like, or move on. I hit the high points on it already.
Maybe we can move on.
Move on. Okay, the best surplus purge went very well. Uh, we declared war on, um, inkjet printers, keyboards and mice, but I've already processed several of those. But we do want you to, we're still obliged, to declare the North Highway Shop a surplus. We would send it up for sealed bids to be sold. The legal description is written there, southwest corner, southwest corner, section fourteen, Howard Township, which is on fifteen sixty-eight. It's wood crane, wood frame building, sitting on point four one acres. It has to be approved by three property owners of the county. And so you may pick three people from the room who own property, and we'll distribute that to them. Jamie's already figured out roughly, right, roughly?
Yeah.
What, that probably would be That's fine, we, we would use that as the foundation for it. So if you're obliged, make a motion to declare that building a surplus, so we'll own property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? And then you can either point three yourself, or if you're good from a crowd, or mixture of all.
Jamie, can she be one?
Mm-hmm, unless you're convinced to buy it. Any wicker have any intentions of buying it? Remind you, remember this.
How about those three right there?
Those three ladies?
Yeah.
Are you ready? So, second. Is that a motion?
Yes, yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, can you okay with sealed bids, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
See, and then I didn't put the white card for sale last month, so I'm gonna do it in the same advertisement and the same process. That's already been declared surplus. It's all done. What takes us to Mr. Hargens? The many, many signatures, I've got a motion before when you get through these, you feel so inclined. If you pass them in bulk, I would assign the same mover, the same second here. Okay. Same vote, clear of that.
Who are any signatures?
Yep. Yep, there's two that are hundred percenters and the rest are
Those are great.
Do you just do all those now?
That's pretty impressive.
Am I missing one, like, why are they all? Do we have?
I think you should, you should just get all of your ahead of set page, Jeff.
That would be nice, because those would have to compete for it.
So which, do you know which two they are? If I could. Yeah, but, I mean, like, where are they at?
There's one play down in the southwest corner of my faucets.
Okay.
And then there's one up, say, Clearbone Brakes. It's between Claire's and Claire's.
It's not, it's like
Man, it's not good.
Neato.
That's those two, and the other one?
So how does, I'm just curious, how does one, how do they differentiate?
They use the number system, and that was entirely upon the engineer and how they, how they evaluated those. Uh, we missed having one more vision there by one point, and that's one of my grandeur churches that goes more, we missed out. But the next time that they do have a grant, that'll probably be first. Yeah, it's all on a number system, and I entirely have engineer terms in it, I guess. And then we applied for them, we, we put them into the application, and they, they went by the number system.
So you, um, how do you wanna do that? Do you wanna do?
I would do the first two individually.
Okay, that's these two.
I will make a motion to approve the first one, do you want the whole number, or should we just call it the first one?
If you use the PCM number, that's unique to it.
PCM zero nine N P.
Can you do the two together?
I would do those two individually, so they're hundred percenters. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to approve PCM zero nine N K.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then these next ones, I think you could do in bulk.
So we think this will all happen next year?
Uh, no, there, there'll, there'll be, there'll probably be more than two, maybe three in a year, so it's gonna be several years out before they're completed.
So we have so long, long memory of this discussion, but once we've approved them and they have that match, do we have so many years to complete them before it's like void? What I mean, does that be done with it?
I'm not sure what, what, what the timeframe is, but this, this particular grant is just for the engineer.
Doug, do you need your recitation of the P N C for each of those next ten? Or can you just say all of the P N Cs?
Well, at least they assign that number twenty-four dash one.
Yeah.
Twenty-four dash one. Which should be unique enough.
Okay, twenty-four one through twenty-four eleven?
Yep.
Vote for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those hearing none?
Okay, so the next, next item is head some township, and there's a Matt Blaschler driveway. It's not marked on any map that we've got, so it's, no one's living there right now, so. Just for information, I was gonna go up and talk to Matt and see what his thoughts were, to keep it illegal, or make it illegal right away so we can keep the maintenance up on it, or if he's not caring, we could just walk away from it, and just want to talk to him about it and see his thoughts.
It just goes to his house, or that house, okay?
Yeah.
It doesn't go to wherever, right?
The glitchy part is that it's an impression property, it's not on the section line.
Through it, so, first, my iris on the section line, it tends to go to north for probably half mile, I bet it's not.
Right.
It's basically, it looks like about a mile, oh, a mile and almost a quarter, but that would really be our responsibility.
Is that, is that the, the last?
Oh.
How'd you?
Yep, that's every time, the last one that we
The last one, I didn't.
That's not organized. Yes. So it's never been illegal right away, it's not on the map, so.
So if you would donate it or give us a perpetual easement, we could add it to the official highway amount via P N C. And we could also get the tax revenue from port of view sales.
And he's willing to do that?
No, he's gonna, oh. If he's not, then just return private property. Stop it.
It's all still there. Few, few years now here, but I did send in a four oh four permit on the instructions that he wants to add, working through FEMA. And we turned it in, where he's talking about doing, and they did prove. And I got the application, sent it to him and sent it to their township, so.
So he called me before the meeting, and he just, if he were here, he would just ask if you had no objections, and if you have no objections, just to make a motion to the state you have no objection to give our township project related to that.
So where is this gonna?
It's a
Your township, no?
Yep.
Where, at, at the time, it says a hundred minutes.
Just south of where Bill on Miller's left and going east.
Crossing the Van Row?
It's on the east side of the Van Row.
East side?
On east.
Going east. Where it's always wet there.
Do we have to adjourn to the commission to reconvene as the drainage ward?
No, the FEMA just wants a record of it, it's probably a little they can add it to their portfolio.
The Corps of Engineers approves it. But we don't say anything different. If there's a problem, it's their problem, man. A motion to
Is you have no objection?
I'm, I move that we have no objection to the Corps of Engineers decision?
I'd make a record.
Okay.
But he said, do we have any objection, Mr. Chairman?
I have none, but now you need a second.
Well, you need a motion for no objection.
For no objection.
You got, second.
You got it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fair.
Stay there.
I wanna do a jack so badly.
FEMA.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Bring it back to me again. Well, you guys had a chance to discuss the fire alarm situation.
Is that it?
Um, I, I just wanted to know if you guys have discussed it any further, if anybody had a.
Sure, we read all the stuff you gave us.
I guess one question I got is, uh, you said something about our, the insurance company that we have, our safety, would you do a walkthrough?
You know, yeah.
But my biggest thing is, why do we wanna? I'm not, I'm not that, uh, no, I, don't get me wrong, I, I agree. We need the protection we needed, but my theory is, let them do the walkthrough and let them tell us, you need this, this, and this. The other question I got is, smoke detectors, this is a public building, are there different smoke detectors for a public building versus a private?
I think in this situation, um, there aren't. I think our fire alarm is probably the main, the main safety system we have right now. Anything we do from there is gonna be over and above.
Okay. I, I, I guess, I guess, I'm, my, my biggest thing is, I don't wanna go,
Maybe.
do something, spend, spend money, and then all of a sudden they come in and say, well, you shouldn't have them kind of assisting this. Yeah, it's not certified. That is the only, that is the only thing, maybe we should look into that.
Yeah.
Or we commit funds to it, because.
Third one's making the requirement, they should make the recommendation.
I don't think they'll make a require, well, I know they won't make a requirement, because this building being, it's a historical building. It's, it's grave the way it is, but, but I don't think it's right that we, we need to have these in these, in these offices. Because their ceilings are sawed. I would think they would tell us where, they would suggest putting those. Right, and if we may put them somewhere where they're not supposed to be, so we, I'm not, definitely not against what we're trying to do here. I'm just.
Who's the lady I'm talking about?
Well, you had a, you had a group that was gonna maybe do a walkthrough, maybe.
Yeah, so, um, the, oh my gosh.
Safety benefits?
Yeah, safety benefits has somebody who comes through, the, uh, and they make recommendations to us as to what we can improve. Um, the course that I took in PIR, they did recommend that we have the proper, you know, fire, fire alarms, safety, smoke alarms. And, um, I was talking to Midwest Fire, and they said that the, um, fire extinguishers are supposed to be within seventy-five foot walkway, pathway, to, to the next office or whatever, to the individual who needs to get it. The only ones that that would be a struggle for are those two on the far end, I think. I don't know, is that seventy-five foot disposed?
Yeah.
Within seventy-five foot or?
Yeah, so they want one at the north end of the common area that would satisfy that.
Right.
And then there's one on this side.
Yeah. So, I mean, if, as far as those go, smoke alarms, I think it's just more for our C and lines.
Right.
Um.
Does our insurance company have any standards, you know, in this area?
They have more safety benefits.
That's who employs them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So they, when they come in, I guess I've spoken to them, and there doesn't seem to be really too much of a recommendation, or I should say clear requirements of that. Like, we could continue on as we are, just fine. Um, like I said, this state assistant fire marshal did recommend like a nest system, um.
Cause I'm guessing they're very likely not the only recommendations they have for us.
Yeah.
They probably have other things that they would say, hey, by the way, you should maybe have some signage for this here, or like this or that, but it's like, it's an idea, if we got them in here sooner than later, then we can make it more.
Right, then we can start a decision.
Whether it's what.
I taught, I did talk to safety benefits about coming in and doing a review, and he said, well, we're gonna be coming in next year anyway. He says, is that good enough? So he didn't seem to take on too much more, but, uh.
Did he say when they're coming next year?
I think, does he usually fall next year, and fall every, every three years they do an inspection?
I just wanna say it was during the summer.
They came in twenty, August of twenty twenty-one is when they came last time.
Yeah, cause they wanted our stuff done by October first.
Mm-hmm. In order for us to receive discounts. So, um, last time, I did, Doug and I did a little digging, and we found their recommendations from last time, and this is what is up here. Uh, we did address the chemicals on the top of the stairs entering boiler room downstairs. We did move them down into the boiler room, and have them in a plastic pool. Um, so they are a little better contained, they're not leaking downstairs and eroding our concrete. Uh, the chemicals at the weed and pest shop moved to a shed, they did move them out into the shop, where they are away from the people who are working there's, I don't know, smelling.
Out of the office.
They're out of the office. Um, so we did follow those, and then they recommended that the ladder be secured at the weed and pest shop, and I know Randy said they did that. And then they talked about our, the county offices and the courthouse, that we should surplus the old equipment, that it's cluttered, um, and their old desks and computer stations and equipment, kinda all over the place. And, uh, yeah, the attic in the basement are trip hazards everywhere, which, I think we've been making a little progress with all the surplusing we've been doing, but there's still a lot of work to do in that department. We've been working to get things organized.
Lot of stuff that needs to just go.
Uh, there is, there really is, um, I think it's just, it's, it's, it's historical, isn't it? Some of it is.
Well, I think they're looking like at the mountain of cardboard boxes in the attic.
Yeah, so with the Christmas decorations out of the basement.
There's neighbors going to the east side and the west side.
Um, or most of the Christmas decorations up here. I was able to inspect, uh, the, the crates, we have a crate down there full of tarps. I'm, I'm thinking like cold era, no?
The cold war.
I'll talk to your husband about, oh, he told me he would be.
Oh, good.
They are somebody's.
They are somebody's.
Need to be there for something.
Oh.
Cause I asked him if they were left.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, that hasn't come up between him and I, I guess. But, um, but yeah, so there's a, a wooden crate of tarps and tents down there. And then there is another metal hospital bed down there that's taking up room. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I thought we got rid of those people.
So, who's hiding?
Fallout shelters.
Merry Christmas decorations. Um, and then there's just a table full of stuff that I think is already been surplus, it just needs to go to the dump.
Did Marilyn Hines ever pick up those doors, the old doors?
Yes.
Shitty, okay.
So, but, but yeah, as far as getting those trip hazards cleaned up up there, I don't know. I guess we're working on it, I'm not sure. Yeah, we'll just continue that, I guess.
Well, if we're cleaning faster than we're piling, that's good.
Well, I hope so.
Um, that's probably not it.
Anyway, um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that those were what they were concerned with the last time they were here. And had ways being made, I'm not sure what recommendations they'll make next time, because I think they inspect a different portion of the courthouse every time they're here. But, um, I guess we'll.
I don't, uh, unless I can't believe we can't just tell them what to come, but. What do they come on?
Um.
Clankington, Mitchell?
And Mitchell, I think someone's seen.
I, I, I guess it might.
It's the exciting moment of this year, isn't it?
It'll be next year.
That's probably what it is, they're probably.
And maybe that's.
There's a download slide.
Cause I can email, email gentleman Carter, I think is the one I email.
Maybe emailing him, telling him.
Sick.
Email him in January, telling, you know, February would be a good time to come.
Do you have any time to?
You know, cause I'm, I'm sure they're, they're at their end of the year, they're either cramming a bunch in, or they're.
Right, trying to finish up. Um, and then one other thing, I guess I wanted to ask, and I don't know, I guess I don't know if I need to ask you guys this or not, but, um, I, I'm looking at teaching first aid and CPR and AED use for one of our training sessions, and it's, it could become a bigger thing if we wanted it to. Uh, I talked to Tom Lipton, and of course he teaches the CPR or the first aid classes. Do we want to offer certification to people at the courthouse, or is that something we want people to do on their own? We just wanna do like a condensed class and say?
We have, how many AEDs do we have here?
One on each floor.
One on each floor? How many people have ever got training out of the door either?
I haven't gone in a long time.
Does that mean a long time?
I was gonna say here.
I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's a bad idea to be certified, and I, I can't believe it's certainly not harmful. It's gonna take a day, probably.
Right.
It's also let this in, we'll appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's a valid thing to know what to do, if you have them available, you should know how to use them.
Does our insurance company recommend it, or reward us somehow, if we?
Well, I think.
You know, I don't know about that.
I think if you, well, I think it would just be one more thing to reward you, uh, that you need, that you do.
Reflect down on us.
You know.
Is Todd willing to teach the class?
So I did ask Tom, he is willing to teach, he said they're each, the first aid and the CPR are each three hour classes. So that's six hours. Um, he said if we do a both together, we can pay him, he said he probably required twenty-five dollars an hour to teach the class. And then he said it's twenty dollars for each individual to get their certification. Um, so I don't know if we wanna make the individuals who are getting certified pay for their own certification, and then we, the county can pay for him to teach the class. I don't, I know I have to pay.
I think that'd be a good thing to pay out to commissioners, to do this.
Yeah, I know, that's just.
Oh, we're just teammates for what we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, more of a last time.
Right, no, 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 we, I guess the amount of files, should everyone be involved, or, like, do the highway workers that are out there on the road, if they don't have access to AED and all things?
It would not.
Do they need it, but I guess they're the ones that would be more likely to need first aid too, probably, I mean, realistically.
First aid.
And the, and CPR, possibly.
Right, and I was thinking it wouldn't be bad for them to have first aid training, I mean, when you have injuries before, that it was very useful when the individual who was able to help did know what they were doing.
Do we have?
First aid's run pretty high up in the courtroom too. There's all kinds of people up there with high blood pressure.
Right, that's true. Now we're on the AED.
Is there, is there any, do we have any mobile ladies and vehicles that are all over there?
I know, I'm a.
Or? And first aid kits, like, how I'd normally first aid.
They're floating in everywhere.
But, yes, we're.
I guess to me, everyone, everyone should be taking this class then, in my opinion.
I, I feel like it would be really good.
That'd be a safety meeting day, if we were.
Yeah, right, and then would it be something where we close down the offices? Or would we, how would we do that? Would we want like?
You don't want that thing.
Happen?
You wouldn't almost have it.
Yeah.
So you would do it all in one day, like the six hours, or?
I was thinking so, I mean.
I guess the other thought is you could do half and half.
Yeah.
You can make it a two day thing, you'd have to pay him twice for his hourly, but.
Look, I'm gonna be the same. Hundred and fifty dollars with the individual certifications are the same cost, but.
Right.
And you can send the room or something.
Then you could at least keep the offices open.
Yeah.
And keep things flowing, I guess.
Right, well, and he did say a hundred and twenty dollars for the class, I don't know if that meant materials, and then twenty-five dollars on top of that for his time? But anyway, um.
Either way.
That's what we're looking at, so.
I guess I would.
So if I can schedule something with him, I thought maybe we'd do like the third week in January?
Never works for anyone, I would say.
Maybe I'll just check and see with everyone.
How busy are you guys January?
It depends on the taxes, yeah, um, because I might get my taxes.
Cause it would be the third week, I think.
It possibly could be.
It could be, that was my question. Rollin' with it, don't we?
Well, I think, but I, there's something that can be worked out.
Yeah.
Between, uh, offices and that, I don't think we can manage.
That's true. We can make sure you can find a time to work every day.
I don't, I don't see.
I wanna switch up the set of words.
I would recommend we do it in two, two shifts, I guess.
Yeah, I would. Cause by that word number six, you're not gonna retain as much as I remember.
You're, you're not wrong. Yeah. So if we just do three hours for each one, and do it consecutive days, or maybe a Wednesday one week, and then a Wednesday the next week, just whip it up a little?
Let's see what guys, whatever the rest.
And what does that keep, because if we get works within, who's gonna teach it?
Right, well, and honestly, we're gonna have the highway department in there too.
You're gonna have a lot of.
They're gonna give us space.
Yeah.
You're gonna have an awful lot of people on that spot.
Be spoiled with that, because we shouldn't be too bad, but.
But, okay, well, as long as I have your permission to pursue that, I will, we can come on with that, and, um.
Tell them about me.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, and I, I guess I can get deeper input on the fire alarms with, uh, I guess, probably.
I think it's a good idea, I just, I think we'd, we'd nice to know, inside of her.
Are you guys leaning towards more the electronic wifi connected to give us a notification, or more courses?
That was my thought, then.
There has to be somebody responsible for a party, or two responsible parties, though.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, and honestly, just have somebody give a notification, call 911, or, unless they automatically notify.
Wifi, fire alarms and stuff.
Yeah.
But, all right, well, tell you what, then I will, thanks for your time.
Those two items are correspondence, they're on the website, it's website, you can sort of close whenever. And then you have the executive session scheduled with the weed board, and then I have one, if you don't mind, I might go first. Mine's relatively short.
Okay, I have a show, one, two, personal. Yeah, it's probably, it's probably legal.
I have more executive session, or do you wanna have a break?
I wanna have a quick break.
I'll go, I just, I'll go, I just to adjourn. Are we just adjourned with commissioners, leave, if we don't take any action, doesn't matter. Anything we do.
Right, I don't, I don't have the other word.
I don't think so. No.
Okay.
Moves to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm telling, but you're coming back, right?
Okay, so, this is my very personalized map. Very professional.
Very interesting, but, very interesting.
Sure.
Okay.
In recent. So this is the county.
Close.
Um, this is how we, County twenty-two, grab, gee, it's grab, right, here's. I thought that's probably nice for you.